Now, I call the board to consider eighteen. Each student who has been present in this report for a season sixteen, and who may show their fullness present with all members of the committee. Please rise to the occasion to give our return for night standing for the pleasure of allegiance and honor of the life of the president, Mr. Sherry.
Please bow. There is probably a question to say you've given it. We do thank you for all the many blessings we have. We thank you for the wonderful teachers, especially the wonderful students that you've given us. We ask tonight that we adoring you in the decisions that we make. We will all stay focused on you for the reason for the season. If you love me, you praise you. Thank you for what you do. Please bear praise in your mouth.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands firmly in our heart, indivisible, with the resounding justice for all. Honorable citizens of the flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
As for the agenda, it is the presentation of the president, Mr. Trump. Yes, sir. Now, we've got a couple of our elements here with us. So first, we want to recognize Ms. Anderson from Kingsbury Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to tell all my students what I appreciate. And thank you the board for allowing us to share some joy with you this evening and for all you who support U K E I S D. And I'm Leah Anderson, and I'm a principal of the International Elementary School. Very excited to celebrate some amazing folks today, starting with Daniel Chisava. Daniel is our campus head custodian. This is her first year at B D E, and we are so happy to have her a part of our family. She is one of the first staff members on campus every day and comes with a smile on her face. She builds relationships with students and staff, is quick to respond to any campus needs in a solution minded. She promotes a positive culture within the data department and her team thanks the world for her. Our school is always clean and shiny thanks to her leadership and dedication. Mrs. Chisava is a great cook, and she always makes sure she brings something new and delicious for us to try. And we do appreciate all you do for this family. Next, I wanted to thank, to thank Ms. Burton. She's not here tonight, but she's ringing the bell in Cleveland tonight. So, I wanted to make sure we honor her. She's our cafeteria manager, and she'll be one of the most positive individuals I've ever met. She greets all the students with excitement and enthusiasm. Mrs. Burton is her tenth year at U K E I S D, and recently moved into the cafeteria management managerial position. Her work ethic is above and beyond. She knew over Mrs. work, and she's the first one to volunteer to assist whenever needed. This weekend, for example, after baking hundreds of cookies for her church, she gave her time on Saturday to help serve our students for our P T Os pancakes with Santa. Our school is a better place because of her. Next up, let's recognize Mrs. Melina O'Noddo. Mrs. Melina O'Noddo started at B D E three years ago as a career professional in our early childhood education class. She transitioned to wide-eyed middle school to support the aspiring program last year. However, she realized that her heart was at the little's. So happy, we are so happy to report that she's back at home as a pre-teen parent in our dual language classroom. Mrs. Melina O'Noddo was always willing to lend a helping hand, and she truly embodies the campus vision, all in for all students. She is like a ninja, and she is where you need her before you know it, you're there. Her great attitude is contagious, and she's quite the person to joke to. I know, it's cute, but they say, "Take my chair." And take my chair, my name is. Mrs. O'Noddo, thank you for bringing humor and a smile to us every day. Next, we would like to recognize Mrs. Chrissy May. Mrs. May is one of our campus's life specialist, and truly one of the most proud people that I've ever met. When I came to B D E three years ago, Miss May and I instantly connected. As a former dyslexic specialist, we both shared the letter of teaching students how to read. Her students adore her and can't wait to go to dyslexia class. And now, everybody wants to go to dyslexia class when she goes to pick up her kids. She's an expert in her field, and it's evident in her student growth and success in reading and writing. She always participates in campus activities and initiatives. She's quick to jump in whenever help is needed before we even know we need help. She represented B D E in a road reading spelling bee, and fun fact, she participated in the same spelling bee in high school. Let's not forget, as Mr. Cooper can attest, Mrs. May also makes some pretty amazing salsa and she won our annual salsa contest. Thank you, Mrs. May, for all the people who make B D E the place to be. All right, last but not least, it is my pleasure to recognize one of our amazing students, Mrs. Laura Lyne. Laura Lyne is a big grade student at U K E I S D. She's an honorable student in our dual language class. She's a positive leader in her role and is respectful, and she always stand up for what is right. Ms. Artisan and Ms. Rashon are great teachers, saying she's always willing to help out compassion. She's a great friend to all, has enthusiasm for learning, and does her best on everything, even when she knows it's just for practice. Laura Lyne is always happy and smiling, spreading positivity and compassion. She feels blessed to be her teachers. Laura Lyne is an active member of our student council, and they are on campus and outside of school. She plays softball, a sport she's played since she was a little baby. She is truly one in the million, and she'll be greatly missed next year if she moves to middle school. I think you've loved her.
Hey, thank you guys for having us this evening. It's with great honor to be here this evening and recognize some more outstanding students and staff here at King's Manor. And I have Ms. Higgins here helping me this evening. These individuals really represent the greatness of King's Manor, and it's been such a joy to, you know, have a second year there as their principal. And so, we're going to go ahead and start with our first student. It's been a great pleasure, by statement for you, to commend the exceptional achievements of a truly outstanding student, Mrs. Caroline High. Come on up here, please. Caroline's creativity is nothing short remarkable, and using each project she undertakes with the unique creativity is, yeah, nothing short than remarkable. With her unique and innovative touch sets her work apart. Her ability to think outside the box only showcases her ingenuity. She's going through the STEM engineering design process for this year at King's Manor, and Caroline's prowess as a skill engineer is evident in her approach to problem solving. Her critical thinking skills are not only honed, but executed with finesse in enabling her to navigate those challenges seamlessly. As she tackles complex issues, Caroline demonstrates a level of expertise that speaks volumes about her dedication and giving, "Thank you, Caroline." Next up, I'd like to ask that Mrs. Brittany Cecil, please join me up here, please. Mrs. Cecil is in her third year with our district. Brittany has become an integral part of King's Manor Elementary, where her unwavering commitment to excellence shines through. Haley from Spring I S D, she has multiple years of experience over there in the child nutrition department, with seven years back in child nutrition, and Brittany is seamlessly woven into the, into the culture of King's Manor Elementary. She greets our children every morning and during lunchtime, and she not only provides nourishment for their bodies and for the spirits as well, she really goes above and beyond. She is a cornerstone of support for our students and staff alike, and her passion is simply notable. When I asked her what her favorite part about the job was, I found it very intriguing that she said it's the culture that she built within her kitchen and her staff each and every day to ensure that they are serving our children. Great experience overall, but thank you, Brittany, for your outstanding work here at King's Manor. Next, if I could please have Mr. Chris Barnett come up, please. I'm honored to highlight Mr. Barnett. His unwavering team spirit that he showed this year, his first year at King's Manor, really goes above and beyond. He has an impressive nineteen years of experience here at U K E I S D. So while his first year here at King's Manor is definitely not his, not his, not his first year, since 2012, he has served as a campus custodial supervisor and throughout the district and at King's Manor. He just continues to dedicate his time and ensures that our school environment is one that is ready to foster learning and growth. Thank you, Mr. Barnett, for your service. We appreciate you. Next up, if I could have Mrs. Joanna Trujillo come up here, please. It's with great humility that I introduce Mrs. Joanna Trujillo. Ms. Trujillo has served in C I S D and has been a proud U K E I S D all for two years. Ms. Trujillo is officially our emergent bilingual career professional, but unofficially, she's the backbone of King's Manor Elementary. There's not a job that Ms. Trujillo has ever asked, has ever been asked, and she's declined. She works tirelessly each and every day, starting her day by greeting all of our students and parents as they get out of the car and they, and they come into the building. In the afternoon, you find her out at the parking lot, and she's ready to direct that stop sign and send them farewell to the end of the day. You never have to, you never have to think if Ms. Trujillo is willing to lend a helping hand. She always is. Ms. Trujillo completes countless tasks between arrival and dismissal, and she never complains about anything. She's organized, creative, and dedicated. She's a hard worker, and best of all, she is cheerful in every single thing she does. It can be raining outside, it can be anything, and she's just always ready to get out there and make the best of it. She, if she is assigned a task, you never have to worry again if it's going to get done. She will not only get it done, but she's going to make sure that it's done with complete excellence. Ms. Trujillo is also an advocate for not only our emergent bilingual students, but also all students. She is always looking for ways to better serve students and ensure their success. Ms. Trujillo builds positive relationships with staff members, parents, and students. It is absolute honor to know and work with Ms. Trujillo, and there is no one more deserving of this recognition than her. Congratulations, Ms. Trujillo, and we salute you for your amazing accomplishments. Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Okay, and lastly, but certainly not least, I would like to honor Mrs. Ashes. Anna Ashy, come up here, please. Mrs. Ashy graduated from Pinewood Park High School and went on to receive her teaching degree from Stephen Austin University. Mrs. Ashy started at King's Manor Elementary in the fall, and in her short amount of time as a quality, she has made a lasting impression. Each day, Mrs. Ashy greets her students with a smile and welcomes them into her learning environment. That puts them in a position to succeed each and every day. Mrs. Ashy works tirelessly to connect with students and her families and does it with a passion and flexibility and a grace, which is true testament to just how deep she is invested in her students. I should note that Mrs. Ashy is one of our fifth grade teachers, and as a first-year teacher, she also is a STEM teacher, because our fifth grade teachers also teach STEM education. So while she is a reading English Language Arts and History teacher, she also has a great STEM education. We're very thankful for that as well. Through her commitment to coach U I L implementation of STEM education and her dedication to the craft of teaching reading, thank you for your unwavering commitment to excellence for the positive impact you have made of the lives of the students. We are proud to have you as part of our U K E family. Thank you, Mrs. Ashy. I would like to just say thank you to the board for recognizing our amazing King's Manor Elementary staff and students, and I just really appreciate you guys letting us have this opportunity to highlight some of the greatness. Thank you.
Okay. To recognize our holiday card.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Each year, U K E art students have the opportunity to participate in the holiday card competition where their submissions are judged and winners are chosen to be printed on U K E I S D's holiday cards. One winner is chosen from each of the following categories: elementary, middle, digital art, and high school. This year, we had a total of one hundred and sixteen entries after each campus judged their best entries to put into this competition. As each winner is announced, they will come up and be recognized. Additionally, the district is providing a twenty-five-dollar gift card and a set of their printed cards to give. First, we have Aileah Gibbs. Aileah is our elementary school winner. She is a fifth grader from Vens Branch Elementary School, and her art teacher is Ms. Mary Blongo. Aileah's inspiration for her design was a snowman because it would be a great holiday choice. You can see it right up on the TVs there. She enjoys discovering new styles and types of art, practicing drawing eyes, and playing volleyball, and over the break, she is looking forward to having more time to create more art. Ladies and gentlemen, Aileah Gibbs. Addison Brown is our middle school winner. She is an eighth grader from Pine Valley Middle School, and her art teacher is Ms. Colleen Guts. Addison's inspiration for her design were all Christmas movies with cozy cabins because she has always wanted to stay at one of those cozy cabins. She enjoys all types of art, and over the break, she is looking forward to hanging out with the family members that she doesn't get to see often. Ladies and gentlemen, Addison Brown. Next, we have Ryan Mayfield. Ryan is our digital art winner. She is a senior from Porter High School, and her art teacher is Ms. LaShawna Roden. Ryan wanted to capture the school's logos while simultaneously highlighting our Texan Western heritage. She enjoys painting, drawing, and participating in theater, and she is looking forward to spending time with extended family over the break. Ladies and gentlemen, Ryan Mayfield. And finally, Paige Johnson. Paige Johnson is our high school winner. She is a junior from Porter High School, and her art teacher is also Ms. LaShawna Roden. Paige's card was inspired by brainstorming things that reminded her of Christmas and turning those into frosted sugar cookies. She enjoys reading, doing puzzles, and attending church, and over the break, she plans to spend time with her family and eat her favorite holiday foods.
All right, one more this evening. We don't normally start off every board meeting with us eating eight different cupcakes up here. I know all y'all saw that, but we did that. But what we did was our holiday competition between our three high schools. Each one of them submitted a couple cupcakes worth to try, and I understand Mr. Papas, after he's done with his photography duties, is ready to announce the winner of the holiday cake of the conference.
Good evening, everybody. This is a very exciting board meeting to come to. I'm excited to sign here, but we get to eat a lot of cupcakes. We take photos, a lot of really cool things, so it's a pretty fun night. But let's go ahead and get down to it. We do this every year. This is the fourth year we've done the just cake of competition. We started off with gingerbread houses. We tried pies last year. This year, we're getting cupcakes, and the students have always seemed to exceed our expectations. I never really know what to expect, but they always exceed it. They always do something amazing. This year, we even had Westport compete for the very first time, so Westport, I don't know if you want to give applause. Just our Westport students, they're only impressed from the sophomore's that are competing against freshmen all the way to seniors in the other high schools. So, third place actually goes to Westport High School, goes cupcake number seven, which is, this is the only thing you're right here. Her parents are here, it's very exciting. It's a big night for Westport. So, second place goes to Porter High School, and it was the churro number, the churro, I want to remember which number that was, four. The churro, okay, it's, yeah, it was really good. It was churro tres leges, everybody, so that was really good, so let's give it up. And then, our first place, and we actually have a gift bag from H G B. H G B has partnered with us every single time we've done this and donated baking supplies for our winners for them to take home. And our first place winner was, who'll be on the meeting, our Porter High School. That sounds fantastic. Where is our student toast brunch? Are they here?
They had to leave.
They had to leave, so they're not here, but it was, we'll give them a gift basket. But again, I want to say thank you to the school board for letting you do this, and to our culinary teachers and our culinary students for coming and doing this, so thank you very much.
All right, our agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for Duquesne High School cheer. Do I get a cupcake while I'm walking?
Good afternoon, Merry Christmas. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of U K E High School cheer. I'm proud to announce that despite a challenging start to our season, our cheer scene still rose to meet all challenges head-on. At the direction and leadership of Coach Abigail Gillespie, our girls placed first at the North Texas Regionals, giving them a bit to qualify for nationals and compete at Walt Disney World in February. The competition will be February eighth through twelfth, during which time our girls will also get a chance to visit Walt Disney World. The tentative cost per athlete is twelve hundred dollars. We will have nineteen girls competing, two coaches, one administrator, and three alternates that will attend the competition. The Booster Club is fundraising to help pay for the cheerleaders who will be attending. On behalf of U K E High School cheer, I ask that this out-of-state trip be considered
Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for Duquesne High School cheer? Motion to move in second, if it's not for the discussion of what we've taken. All of the mayors say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion is approved. Your end, ladies.
Thanks, sir.
Our board agenda is consideration of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three's annual financial report presented by Greg Peterson.
Hello, my name is Greg Peterson. I'm the audit partner for the audit of Duquesne Municipal District, and it is my pleasure to present the results of our audit for the fiscal year beginning August thirty-first So, the purpose of an audit is for the auditor to write their opinion on the financial statements. This year, we will be rendering an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so that is the highest level of assurance you can receive in an audit. We conduct our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. During that process, we evaluate the district's numbers. Will we also evaluate internal controls over the key transaction classes of the district? We do not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as part of that review of internal controls. Beyond just looking at the district's numbers and balances of internal controls, we also evaluate the district's expenditures of federal programs. We call that a single audit. Under a single audit, we also are going to write our opinion, that being an unmodified opinion, again, a clean opinion over compliance with federal boards. The two programs that we tested were the E C F, Emergency Connectivity Fund Program, and the E S R Fund. We did not identify any non-compliance or any matters over compliance, internal controls over compliance, so no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over internal controls. So, as a floor, just from those two slides right there, those are all great things to hear. Unmodified opinions and having no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. So, I already gave a grade for an audit, this would definitely be an A audit. These are definitely the buzzwords that you want to hear when speaking about the results of an audit. As your auditor, there are certain communications that are required to make to governance, so I'll do some of the next couple slides, we'll be talking about those. So, Weaver's responsibility in relation to the financial statements is to write her opinion on the financial statements. Again, those being unmodified opinions, we are to remain compliant with all ethical requirements, so Weaver did remain independent throughout the engagement, looking at qualitative aspects of the entity's significant accounting policies. During the current year, G A S B did issue a new accounting standard, G A S B ninety-six, for how the district reports I T subscriptions. That was implemented as of the current year. When we evaluate estimates that are built into the financial statements, the ones that we deem to be the most significant would be allowance for uncollectible taxes, foundation school program revenues, the net interest and open head liabilities. We consider all disclosures to be neutral, clear, and consistent. Happy to report that there were no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. The district did not have any uncorrected or corrected misstatements identified by us during that process. We did not have any disagreements with management, and management did provide us with a representation letter enabling us to write with the opinion and issue our reports. And management did not have to go and seek consultation with other captains as part of our process, so they didn't have to go out and seek a second opinion on any conclusions that we reached. So, let's quickly go over some of the numbers from the audit. What we're going to look at here is the general fund. So, the general fund is the primary operating fund of the district. Total revenues were a hundred and ninety-eight point five million dollars. That's a sixty million dollar increase over prior year. Largest piece of that increase is in your local and intermediate sources. About fifteen point eight of that, or fifty point eight million dollar increase over prior year, resulting from property tax increases. Valuations increased, so that's the reason for the increase in revenues there. Also, interest earnings for about two and a half million dollars more than they were prior year, so the banks are actually starting to pay a little bit more for the monies that are sitting there. Expenditures were a hundred and ninety-eight point two million dollars. That's a thirty-three million dollar increase over prior year. That's primarily related to payroll increases, twenty million in payroll. That's primarily related to payroll increases, $20 million in payroll increase. Seven of that 20 is from a proven set of patrons. Another three million is from just general maintenance operations. Another reason we see a big increase this year is because prior years, we were able to move operating costs over to some federal grants, ESAR grants. As that money starts to wind down, that money, those expenditures, move back over to the general fund. Continue on looking at the income statement for the general fund. We had other financing sources and uses that added to about $2.7 million. This is again for the issuance of those IP subscriptions, IP equipment. Net-net was an increase to the general fund fund balance of $3 million, which resulted in ending fund balance of $63.6 million. We like to do some other ratios when we talk about fund balance. We like to look at the different categories of fund balance. The most important category being the unassigned fund balance. That's essentially what's available for use for the next year. When we do this ratio, we look at how much unassigned fund balance we have in comparison to operating expenses. So, the district does have three and a half months of operating expenses sitting in the unassigned fund balance, which is a great position to be in. TA generally looks for somewhere around 16 to 90 days, somewhere around there, a half a day or so. So, you are right where the state kind of looks at. When we combine your unassigned and assigned fund balance together, we do that same ratio and increase your operating expenses to about four months. So, between your unassigned and assigned fund balance, you have about four months operating expenses. General fund balance, basically, I just covered this, so we'll skip that slide. We'll move on over to the debt service fund. Again, we're looking at the income statement for the debt service fund. Debt service fund does exactly what it sounds like it does if based on debt service on all your long-term debt. Revenues were $39.7 billion. You have the biggest portion of that in local and intermediate sources from your property tax rate. Your expenditures were $32.3 million. Again, that's the scheduled principal and interest payments on your long-term debt. When we look at your other financing sources and uses, the district did refinance some old debt to get some savings. Refinance at a lower interest rate to reach some savings for the district. There was an increase in fund balance of $9.2 million, bringing the funding balance of the debt service fund to $16.4 million. And then finally, we'll look at the capital project fund. Capital project fund accounts for capital bonds that are issued to be spent towards capital improvement, new schools, essentially for the district. During the year, revenues were $1.8 million, that's just interest earnings on the 23 bond series that was issued in July. $200 million of that went current interest of about $2 million for a couple of months. Expenditures were $26.9 million. Biggest component of that being for capital play. Again, that being for Little West Fork High School primarily, as one of those expenditures were incurred. Other financing sources, you see the $200 million here, that was the issuance of bonds. So, the $200 million came in as another financing source. With netting interest or expenses, increase fund balance by $175 million. Again, basically, what that represents is just unspent bond proceeds to be used for future capital projects. So, that really kind of hits the high points of our presentation. Again, the key parts really came from the first two slides when we talked about unmodified opinions and no material weaknesses of what we did. I have to answer a question over here.
Is there a motion to approve 2022 New Caney financial report? Motion to move a second to be done for the discussion of what we've taken. All those that may or say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our board agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. We have one person. Ms. Brittany Morrison. Before you speak, I have a statement to read. The board encourages comments of assistance of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. Board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues can be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If the issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level and prompt and adequate resolution of complaints and concerns. The policies are available on the district website, www新caneySD.org.
Sorry, this is my daughter. We've had a few issues, and I dealt with school, and I called the office several times. But I think it's something that a lot of people don't know about. And basically, there are furries going on in school, like kids that identify as dogs, foxes, and all that kind of thing. And my daughter goes to keep her. I have a son in first grade at Tola. I have a high schooler at New Caney. But this furry kept working at her, running after her. And they have the same name, they're both the same Zoe. And so, she gets a lot of people coming up, the heat of her, which she likes to be, you know, with her, you know, picking on her. And the kid literally does work at her, his stepher, on the school bus in the hallway. And whenever I called, I was told that it's kind of, I guess, the category of, you know, I identify as this or that. And so, you have to respect them. And you can't tell them not to do that. It's gotten progressively worse because the furry has no boundaries, basically. And that's kind of where, you know, it's gone from, it's okay to bark in the hallway, run after kids, kiss them on the bus, to now throwing basketballs at people, trying to pull another kid off the bus. Like, there's no boundaries. They look at her in a clip, and she has a sister that is at Tola Elementary. This past week, well, actually today, twice, I got called because my first grader was punched on the side of his head, his ear, and then elbowed his cafeteria. And it's not even just a slippery slope, like when a parrot's like, we're just going off the end of like a cage. You know, just well off the edge of the cliff. Because when you go to a different marking class, which is all these things, because they're expected by, as a dog or a fox, the bullying has been worse and worse, and there's just no boundaries. So, I am asking that, I don't know if you often have some kind of policy where, I mean, it's all primary county. I didn't think that we'd ever have this issue, you know, like this, but maybe in the handbook or tell teachers that it's not okay if your student identifies as a dog or a fox. And if you look it up online, it says it's a rumor. In our community in Tola, I asked a question on our Facebook page, our Instagram page. Has anybody else had issues, any parents, have they had issues with a furry? You know, we got blocked. A whole new page was created because of this. So, every time we bring it up, it's, the response is, it's a rumor, it doesn't happen, but it is happening. And it's crazy, and it's going more to bullying and everything. So, after she got barked at and his step on the bus, and I called, you know, happened in the hallway, it happened on the bus. I want it dealt with. And then I called, and I said, she is being bullied because other kids are coming up and, you know, getting mixed up. She was taken, taken out of class, and she had to write a statement. I told, I knew it was happening, I said, you did short and simple. She wrote four pages, but, you know, you can tell in certain vibe, my child, it's, this is weird and stupid. And I, none of the adults will tell them to stop. You know, if she could do that, I should pay them to, I was trying to hurt an example. It was like, it's like if somebody identifies as a whale, you know, it's that crazy. And so, she put that in there, you know, what if I identify as a whale? And I have to hydrate myself every once in a while and pour water out of my body. It's that crazy. So, if we could somehow have something, address it somehow, because, I mean, like, like I was told, if they identify as this, we have to respectful include them. Which would be just crazy is letting her, as far as a little, you know, and we can't get there. But it's getting worse with the bullying because the kids are doing this kind of thing. It's getting worse and worse with actual like kicking and beating. One mom texted me, and she said that in the school down the road, there, in high school, actually, there are kids that they bark, and they can yell, and if you get too close, they'll try to bite you. So. Okay, thank you.
Adam's six agenda is reports.
Yeah, I'm the construction committee. Wendy and I are on the, on the second construction committee, and we met at King's Manor Elementary over at the school on November 15th. We were treated to a wonderful time in the STEM lab, and we had some great food, which I appreciated. And we got to work with some kids. Our activity was to, they had this task, and we had to work within a budget, so we're learning about math. We had to come up with a way, engineering-wise, to cut our stuff, keep our stuff from falling out of a tree. And we just had a really great time. I didn't want it to be over, but if the buzzer goes off, then we all have something. I did not win, so I'm looking for a rematch. But we really had a great time. And Mr. Carl Logan overview of the process of developing that program and the structure that goes around it. We really had a good time. If they have a STEM night, I would encourage the rest of them more to get to go. I had no idea what it was going to be like, and my expectations were exceeded. And I think that we should all get to experience it. I can't wait for it to spread to our other campuses and be the flagship model. I think it was great. But we, our contest was building a better bird nest challenge. The kid that I was assigned with, sweet student, our birds all died. The end. And it was really good.
They say a picture for a thousand words, so a video must be worth a hundred. So, Dr. Bowers, you're going to play my picture.
This test highlighted a new STEM education initiative. With this new initiative, students at King's Manor have access to interactive STEM learning labs aimed at fostering a dynamic collaborative learning environment.
My favorite part is probably anything to work on projects that I wouldn't usually get to work on. It felt really good because I actually got to test the idea.
The problem we were given was to build a bird nest to keep it from falling out of tree stages of wind out of the tree. And my partner here was very creative in his thoughts and what he could foresee would happen when the wind hit it. So, we had to utilize math, we had critical thinking, we had design, and then we had to go back and re-adapt it just a little. So, he modified it. So, I was really impressed with putting in engineering, along with math and science.
The benefit is that students have hands-on experiences that will connect their learning to the real world. And they learn skills like critical thinking and collaboration that they'll need to be successful in any job.
My favorite part is that, is the idea that you get to customize your own rebuild, and there's no, like, okay, it's, you have to do this math, like, step by step by step, and everyone has to do the same thing. Do something, everyone in the world needs to know this way. So, you're not like making something that's everyone's already made. You're making something new, you're making something that no one's ever seen. Be impressed by yourself.
So, I believe that STEM education provides a global perspective to a real lot of experiences. I believe that it really improves those critical thinking skills among our students. And it creates a culture where we cultivate with our students that failure is okay and that failure is the first attempt to mark.
Gets them excited about school, it gets them excited about learning, creating, exploring, just really growing their natural, you know, because they're there to help kids have. So, just love to see the program's success with that. It's on our focus here, especially on the success of different data home, health home projects, or any inside successful.
You learn many things about constructing and building and growth problems and how you consult them. But just a little science is true, and who knows? If you're a natural engineer, you could possibly make the world a very much better place.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers, for the record. My bird is the day of the tree. Our bird has none. Thanks. Adam's seven, the agenda is super technical.
All right, Mr. Walter, I've been interrupting you. Come on up. We're continuing our, our series, let's say, of highlighting different departments across our district and just giving our, our community, you guys, some insight into what they do, putting some names and faces together and giving them their, they're not shut. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Walter.
Fantastic. Thank you all so much for inviting us to be here this evening. I am absolutely honored to be able to present our team and then an update for things that are going on within our department. So, I first want to, let's see if this is working. Yes, we are going to talk today about, I'm going to share with you who our leadership team is. We will talk about our mission statement. They're playing a little bit of moving around over here, I see. Very, very good. We're going to talk for our mission statement. I'm going to talk a little bit more about what we do within our department, and we've got some celebrations I'd like to share with everyone. So, first off, we have our core leadership team. That includes me and four coordinators, three of which are here tonight. The flu is running rampant through our department, so those that are not here are probably getting well. So, first, we have Melissa Benetti, who is our coordinator of elementary instruction. Ms. Jasmine Matthews is home. She is the coordinator of secondary instruction. We have Megan Schert, who is our coordinator over behavior services. And then we have Amber Snyder, who is our coordinator over assessment and compliance. And within our leadership team, we also have what we refer to as our collaborative team. That is the extension of our coordinators, and it includes our specialists as well as our lead assessment team members. So, first and foremost, we know behavior is, is something we're talking about right now. And so, we are keeping this team very busy this year. So, with Megan Schert, we have here tonight Ms. Brittany Hamilton as one of our behavior specialists. And then we have Ms. Deborah Lawson, who is here as well as one of our behavior specialists. Ms. Jane Reed is, that is home this evening, and so she is not here tonight. We then have our instruction team. So, our instruction team includes Melissa and Jasmine as the coordinators. And then we have Ms. Jethal Schrader. She is our elementary specialist. And Mr. Taylor Adams, who is our secondary specialist. They serve the instructional needs at all of our campuses. And then we have our assessment team. We have this Amber Snyder, again, is our coordinator. And then, along with her, we have Charisse Hall. She is our lead diagnostician. We have Nikolai Morgan, who is our lead school psychologist. For those who may have heard the word LSSP spoken historically, this LSSP term is now replaced with school psychologist. We are the, we were the only state, or one of the only states in the nation, that still referred to our psychologists as LSSPs. And now, the school psychologist is how they're referred to now. It was a big, big deal in the profession, for sure. And then we have Ms. Kelby Rivera, who is our lead speech pathologist. So, this is our dynamic team. Last year, I introduced them as the 12-pack. We are now the baker's dozen. We did add one more, so we are so thankful to have that one addition this year. I will tell you, hands down, that this is the most dynamic group of people that I have been honored to work with. We have one vision, one goal, and we are here to do what is right by our students for seeing special education services. So, if you guys could give a round of applause for a second. You don't need to listen to me. You don't need to listen to me. Okay, so I wanted to share with you all our mission statement. So the New County Independent School Department of Special Education is dedicated to innovation, individualization, and inclusive practices to promote student independence. Ultimately, if our students are not independent when they leave the walls of New County ISD, then we've not done our job. So we want to ensure they are as independent as they can within the scope of what is right for them. So if they're, um, able to hold down a job, able to belong to a university, some kind of college, um, day program, whatever it takes, and that is what we are charged with doing, with the kids is our focus. So what do we do? We do serve our students with disabilities, their families, and the campuses that support them to ensure that students receive the free, appropriate public education due to them. We also support our campus leaders, our teachers, our parent professionals, and our assessment staff through professional development of the legal framework, as well as all the research-based practices for special education. We spoke a little bit last year, but we provide specially designed instruction. That is oftentimes the difference between students who may be eligible for five or four services or may be eligible for special education. We have to determine if our students do require what is called specially designed instruction. And we provide that through the research-based curriculum, the accommodation, and the modifications for our kids. We also create inclusive environments where all students can access the curriculum and make progress towards their post-secondary goals. I wanted to share a little bit about our growth. I know we did speak about this in the spring, but I want to show you where we landed in snapshot of twenty-three. We, um, this is a five-year lance, and we ended a snapshot with twenty-five hundred and thirty students being served through special education. We were, this time for October last year, we were at twenty-one hundred and three students. One of the things I would like to note is the difference or the growth between a two-year span. So if we look between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, we grew by two hundred and thirty-seven students. But if we look from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three, we have grown by eight hundred and thirty-six students. So right at six hundred students difference in that two-year span. We also are working diligently on the initial assessments. We spoke about this in the spring as well, and where we were at that time. We did end the twenty-two, twenty-three school year by completing five hundred and ninety-three initial assessments for special education. And then where we are sitting right now as half-year data is we have completed two hundred and sixty-three initial evaluations. And we currently have four hundred and ten referrals, initial referrals to special education in the works. That means consent has been obtained by the families to move forward with an evaluation. We will have, um, the dyslexia screener. That will happen in January. That will also produce additional, uh, referrals through that process. And then we'll just continue to have the same that will be coming through the RTI, the MTSS, um, peer-to-peer process. So we are on target to potentially serve, uh, complete over, well over seven hundred evaluations this school year for initial evaluations for special education. I wanted to talk a little bit about our specially designed instruction. The curriculum that we as the special education department provide as resources for our teachers who are serving our students in special education. We have targeted reading intervention through WAGL, which I just, I think that's a fabulous little word for the, uh, elementary program. So we have the WAGL program, Read One Eighty and Math One Eighty. Those interventions are targeted for our struggling readers and our students who struggle with math. We also have autism panel. We also have a PCI reading curriculum that we use within our, um, within our special education settings. Into Y, you can see kind of up in the middle, um, by the globe, that is our alternate curriculum. That is a curriculum that is provided to all of our students who receive alternate instruction through prerequisite skills primarily served through our life skills programs called Applied and our RISE program and our Aspire program. That is also accessible to our eighteen-plus students. There's a transition component there that works, um, on the transition skills and the employability skills as well. We know that social skills is a big component of what we are charged with, uh, teaching our students, and so we have a host of resources available to our teachers. The peers curriculum is one that we have implemented this year. We have had social thinking, and the VB map is also an assessment that we've been able to use with our students, specifically in the area of autism, to determine where they are currently functioning in several aspects of their, their day-to-day. CPIs are approved, uh, resource that we use for de-escalation, um, and any kind of crisis management within a classroom that may be escalated. We want to celebrate some things this evening. One of the things that we are so thankful to be a part of, a couple years back, we applied for an autism grant, and along with six other districts, and we were awarded two point nine million dollars across two years. We are in our second year of that grant, and with that, we've been able to provide a host of opportunities for our students, for our families, and for the teachers that serve our students. We have done autism training. We have done applied behavior analysis, um, within the classroom setting. We have had some assessment training for our assessment staff to really understand those nuances that go with identifying a student who may have autism. We have been able to add those social skills components since re-identities at different campuses for our kids. AAC, which I'm sorry, I did not write that out, but that is assistive, augmentative, and assistive technology for students. We've been able to provide iPads in our classrooms for our students, um, with autism in that alternate curriculum, maybe non-verbal, to provide some, uh, communication software on those devices for them to learn how to communicate with their peers, with their teachers, and with their families. And then we've been providing behavior skills training, and along with that, we've also had parent training. So we've had several opportunities where we have had people recognized well within the nation that are coming in to provide some high-quality opportunities and training for behavior and communication for our families. So it's been such an honor to be a part of this. We hope that DEA continues this grant program, and in case it's not, we will apply for that again as well, so we can continue to grow our capacity. When I spoke with you in the spring, we, um, presented some, some pretty I O P numbers, I believe, and I really am just wanting to celebrate and thank you all. Thank our finance department, thank HR, thank you all as the board, Mr. Calvert. Um, we do feel heard, and I want to say we want to celebrate. We have received a hundred and three positions since the spring of twenty twenty-three. We have, you can see the bulk of that is parent professionals. We were in dire need of the hands and the feet supporting our students with the most significant disabilities, and we are so thankful to see that. We've received teacher positions, diagnosticians, school psychs. We have speech pathologists and assistants, and we are super excited to have added bilingual secretaries. We know that need has been huge at our campuses to be able to provide some interpreting and some translating of any of the meetings, um, specifically for our committee of second language learners. And then we also added our facilitators. That is a position that we have, um, just over the last few years, added to our department, and it really, based on the number, the sheer number of students that require an annual audit at least once a year, um, that helps take the burden off of our assessment staff who are there really to complete those evaluations, give them the time to put into that, those hours that are required for that. So we want to say thank you very much for just the support that has been provided to us. Our teams feel it. Our students are successful, and we feel that we're making, um, incredible progress for our department. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts. I also just realized, oh no, next slide. Uh, we want to share with you our upcoming events. I know a few of you were able to come to our expo event that was in May, and I wanted to share with you some of the events that we are doing this year. We have hosted our success golf event. We have success, um, hosted our parent rally. We had that in October, where we invited parents. We have one platform for Zoom, and we have one in-person option for families as well, one during the day and one in the evening, to be able to share with them information about our department, resources for them, and then really, um, gather questions that they may have about special education and see what needs are, are still there for us to help support. We, um, are excited to have our second, um, parent symposium, which will be in February. We will take over the ANX, and we will have various organizations, um, agencies, members available that specialize in serving our special education population during school ages and beyond, so families can access those resources. We will also, on that same day, we will have our, um, we will have trainings. We'll have opportunities for them to sit down with our team of experts over here to learn behavior strategies, communication, um, how do you work with a student who may be, um, at a certain level, or have, say, a reading difficulty? So we will, if you know of anyone, any resources that are out there, we are gathering that information. Um, we want to make this bigger and better than it was last year. We'll continue to grow it throughout the years. I would like to invite you to the upcoming ones. We have our Mardi Gras extravaganza, which this year is actually on Fat Tuesday. How crazy is that? That it worked out that way? Um, so we will take over the, um, this room right here. We will have lots of sensory opportunities. We will, we make king cakes out of donuts. It's super cute, and we will be serving our population, elementary population. So you are all are welcome. It's a rotation event. Students come and go throughout the day to access that event. Sunshine Day is our Montgomery County Fair. They host a special day for all students in the Montgomery County who, um, have, have special needs, and they shut down the fair and bring everybody in for us. So super excited to be a part of that again, and I know we had a few of you at the expo, and so I would love to invite you to come out to border high. Thank you so much for showing up, Mr. Mixon. Um, we, and Mr. Calvert as well, don't believe him, no. Um, but we were so thankful to see, um, just a lot of gross manner activities, and I think you were even mentioning some of the kids' soccer skills are a little beyond what I know my skills are in soccer, um, that we just had a great opportunity, just, and it was a glorious day, gorgeous weather, just to be outside and watch our students participate in some amazing activities. And then our first year last year was, um, for the Sound the Alarm. That is an event we did for our elementary kiddos. We took over the parking lot here at the stadium, and we invited a fire truck to some water events, and it was amazing. So these are the dates that I would love to share with you all. We'll get them on calendars if you'd like them there. One of the opportunities I would love to share with you is the expo. We do, um, take sponsors that will get your name on the back of the T-shirt, to be able to pay for the T-shirts for the students and, uh, any of the other material supplies that we buy on that day. So if you're interested, just email me, and we'll get to in contact with the right people. Um, and, Dr. Powers, I did this wrong. This is supposed to be playing a video for you. Um, if we were on the P D app, it's not on the live one, so I apologize for that. But it is on the New County ISD social media page, and this was our success golf event that we hosted this year. Just the smiles that you would see on these kids' faces. It's just worth every minute that you're there. And then this year, my goodness, first annual turkey bowl for our secondary students was held at the Valero, which is up in the woodlands. We were welcomed with open arms by a community of people in that location that just were thrilled to have us there. I would love to have you there next year just to see just how we are training kids, showing them, exposing to them to things that they can participate in recreationally, beyond our walls and beyond when they leave us. And we do have a special presentation tonight. As our first annual turkey bowl, we had, uh, we were gifted a bowling pin by Valero. They were thrilled to be able to have us there, and we had our eighteen-plus students, our, um, adult continuing education class. They did the, um, vinyl, the vinyl stickers. And then our leadership team has signed it, so, Mr. Calvert, we would love to present you with the very first turkey bowl. Bowling pin. So I believe that ends our time with you tonight. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. Item eight on the agenda is a consent calendar, consisting of consideration of methods, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of construction reports, consideration of construction items, and consideration of policy updates. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item on this account? Motion to move this second. There being no further discussion of what we take. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. Item nine on the agenda is consideration of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic calendar presented on this topic.
Good evening. Um, we shared with the community of this academic calendar for twenty-four, twenty-five, so I just wanted to share some of the significant changes. Um, this next year, we're proposing that we start on a Wednesday. So we'll start, um, the week of the week, which is usually very popular with teachers. They get in, get started, and then have a regular week. Um, we will only have four days of professional learning before the school year starts. We typically have five. Um, and then the day after Halloween for stu-, is the student holiday? So that's kind of popular. Um, and that's also the first weekend in November, which is also a very popular weekend for some periods. Um, the last day for students and teachers is still before Memorial Day, um, and graduations will be May sixteen, May twenty-first, and May twenty-second. Um, and so when we shared this on December sixth, we feel like we got really good feedback from them. They also took it back to their campuses and worked to share any concerns with us, and Scott Castleberry and I did not get any concerns. They were pretty happy with what was proposed. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar? There being no further discussion of what we take. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. Item ten on the agenda is consideration of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic calendar for New County Early College High School.
Okay. We also shared that proposed twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar for a day at early college high school. Um, they worked to develop their own, and it's more of a traditional calendar because there's all of their students in, most of their students in, unless they're college, so we try to stay with that. One thing that Miss Bill and her leadership team also work on is, um, having a Friday each month where they, uh, which is, they have a commitment to service learning as part of their blueprint, so they build that into their calendar where their shows go out and work with the community. Um, but their, um, team worked on that together, and they're definitely mad about it. This is what they, um, any questions about that?
Is there a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar for New County Early College High School? Motion to move this second. There being no further discussion of what we take. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. Item eleven on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting in the majority of Texas government code five five one point zero seven four, due to the purpose of personnel matters. Government code five five one point zero seven two for attorney consultation. And government code five five one point zero seven two for preparation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session, the special will take place after the board reiterate the closed meeting. Time is seven oh seven. The board ended its closed meeting at nine oh seven P M. We're now repeating in open session. Item twelve on the agenda is consider discussing potentially for approve the negotiation for the purchase of real property located in Montgomery County, Texas, and delegated authority to superintendent related to the note, negotiation and purchase, to Mr. Calvert. Yes, sir. This is the, this is the project we previously discussed in closed session. Any questions?
I'm looking to approve the negotiation for the purchase of real property located in Montgomery County, Texas, not to exceed the non-discussed closed session, and delegate authority to superintendent, where it says I need to negotiate, execute, amend, or terminate any agreements from closing documents related to the purchase discussed in closed session.
Second. Motion to move this second. There being no further discussion of what we take. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is approved. Item thirteen on the agenda is consider, discuss, and conduct grievance for a level three appeal of a student presented by Mr. Calvert. Uh, yes, sir. I'm gonna switch with Mr. Nichols at this time, and, uh, the life family, if you'd like to, they'll come up here and have a seat in front row. This meeting of the New County Independent School District Board of Trustees is convened on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The board is now convening for the purpose of hearing agreements, appeal concerning the discipline of a student. For the record, my name is Tyler Al. I am the board president of New County ISD Board of Trustees and be presiding over this appeal hearing. Be presiding over this appeal hearing. Uh, the following members of the Board of Trustees are present. Mr. Turner, uh, I'm blank, Ms. Harold, Ms. Purple, Ms. Short, Ms. Hopkins, and Mr. Mixon. For the record, the floor is present. Hearing the grievance, presentation. In accordance with statute law and board policy that the county ISD is making a record of this hearing, including an audible electronic recording of all oral testimony and/or argument in order to make the most accurate record possible. Each speaker must clearly identify him or herself before speaking. Please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the record will reflect the proceedings accurately. With agreements, please introduce yourselves to the board for the record.
Hello, my name is Fallon Boulah, how are you?
Kevin Wai.
Would the representative for the NCISD administration please identify yourself?
Matt Carter, superintendent of the NCISD.
Let the record also reflect that New County ISD's legal counsel, Mr. Eric Nichols, is also present but is not participating in this hearing except to, except as needed to provide procedural advice during the hearing. For the record, the board has received copies of the level two record of the grievance, including in the record also copies of the written complaint forms, all documents considered at the previous levels and the written responses from the previous orders. These documents will be considered part of the record of this level three hearing. This grievance appeal stems from Mr. and Mrs. Boulah's request to set aside the recommended disciplinary placement assigned to their student following an incident that occurred at Kiefer Crossing Middle School on September seventh, twenty twenty-three. The student has assigned, was assigned to a disciplinary alternative education program housed at the Learning Center and Mr. and Mrs. Boulah disagreed with this, that placement. Having this information, I will announce each member of this board, he or she is able to serve as an impartial member of the board and hearing body and to arrive at a decision based solely upon evidence presented at this hearing in consideration of Mr. and Mrs. Boulah's appeal today. Any member not able to act in such a manner may say so at this time and has to be excused from further participation. Short. Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Ms. Purple.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Option one. The following trustees have, uh, let me say another one. Introducing the procedure. Procedure today will be to allow both Mr. and Mrs. Boulah and the New County ISD administration to make a presentation. This will not be an evidentiary hearing and there will be no cross-examination of witnesses. This is not a trial and no formal rules of evidence or procedure will apply. Mr. and Mrs. Boulah will make their presentation first followed by the administration. This presentation will be conducted as follows. Each side will have fifteen minutes to make their presentations. Each side will then have five minutes for a total or final argument. The board members will then ask any, ask any clarification questions of the parties. I would like to remind both parties that pursuant to board policy, FNG will, this level three appeal is limited to issues and documents considered at level two, as such, no new arguments may be raised during this hearing. The sole issue before the board today is whether Mr. and Mrs. Boulah's requested remedy of setting aside their student's DAP placement is warranted. Are there any questions before we begin? I do have one question. You did want this in open, not in closed session, correct?
Okay.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure I know the record. I will serve as timekeeper. When your time expires, you must stop your presentation. Mr. and Mrs. Boulah, you may now proceed with your presentation. Again, please identify yourself for the record before speaking.
Kevin Boulah, um, parents. Uh, thank you guys again for hearing our appeal. And while we understand that the support is there for, the reason that is there for, and one of the reasons why we moved to this district is because of the core values that we find within the district itself and all of those things. That being said, the reason why we're here today is more of a lack of what we find in a sense of professionalism in our school itself and out of district having certain matters. And we want to just make our voice be heard and to understand that we're not here because we want to, or here because we want the voice and opinion what we think is best for our school.
Hi, my name is Fallon Boulah. Um, as you've already mentioned that you are aware of the incident that took place on September seventh, um, this year. We have all the recordings and the documentation and things of that nature. And just to go over it a bit, um, it was a situation where our son, for a period of about a week or so, was at bus stop by himself, um, in the morning. And as we know, it's pretty dark when the school buses come around to pick up the children. And I didn't know at that time to talk to Captain, asking some questions. So as a parent, I panicked. We are in the county, it's wooded, we are amongst wildlife, stray animals, things of that nature. We personally have been attacked multiple times by stray animals. So, uh, it was my child's concern and safety that mattered to us most. And so out of panic, uh, did issue the pepper spray to him for a temporary complete solution. I didn't fully think it through. And of course I reminded him to tie the toy, things of that nature. Um, but when he got to school, there was another student that saw the pepper spray on his land. They're curious, asked him what it was and removed it, uh, from him about his, his day. So even after my son said, hey, you can't play with that, blah, blah, blah. Um, and he sprayed this pepper spray in the restroom. So, you know, again, something that my son didn't actually do. He didn't take it to school on his own, wishing he didn't, um, spray it on his own. So, but at the same time, he's being punished for something that he didn't do. Um, Mr. Colker from Kiefer Crossing Middle School, as well as, uh, Miss Slade, the principal there, decided that he would have three-day suspension and refer him to a third-day, uh, uh, attendance to the alternative school or refer to his TLC. Even after we tried to have a conversation of just fair judgment and concern, uh, considering the fact that my son had never had any prior incidents or behavior issues with this school. Um, academically, he had been outstanding and great rapport with teachers. And we even have letters that we submitted from the teachers that approached that. They still decided that he needed to refer it to this alternative school. Um, my, my issue with that is that I'm aware that the DAP placement is discretionary. According to the handbook of the county ISD, when making this decision, some of the things to consider would be, was it out of self-defense? And as I mentioned before, this without a concern of protection of our son, one of the things that are surrounding this area. Uh, another thing to consider would be what was the intent of the student that the age and misconduct at that time? Well, my son didn't potentially spray anything. Um, he didn't have an intent to harm anyone. And it was another student who caused a situation that could have been harmful. Um, so those things that also, also should be taken into consideration would be, again, as I mentioned, in academic history, his behavioral history, when taking into account should the student be referred to TLC? And this is where we as parents are confused because these things do not seem like they were taken into consideration at the level, um, from Mr. Colker, the principal, and even onto Mr. Carter, the superintendent. Um, we're also being made aware that there are several other students that, that attend Kiefer Crossing that have a record of causing trouble or having behavior issues and have yet to be sent to TLC. And this goes back to my point about this option to refer students to TLC can be discretionary. At this level, why Dr. Slade and the principal of Kiefer Crossing chose not to be so lenient with our son as she have been with others is confusing to us. Uh, it's a question that I asked her, yet I still have not received a response to that. Another concern of ours is that TLC is for children who have behavior issues. It could run from babysitting, sexual misconduct, vandalism, et cetera. Our son does not fit that criteria. He does not have that background. And so I'm even more concerned, uh, about him going to an environment where there is a negative impact, where there are other students who have misdemeanor. I don't see how this is going to enrich or encourage his learning. And this was one of our reasons why we chose to start initiating appeal because I do not feel that it was warranted or effective, uh, for the issue at hand. Part of the, the placement for DAP are the requirements for students attending TLC is that they have to be away from their original school setting. In this case, since we started the bill, as you know, this incident took place on September seventh. Well, it is now, uh, December eighteenth and that has been far longer than thirty days. Uh, our son has not been placed at DAP. He's not at Kiefer Crossing. He has been at home completing his work online when he was, uh, able to do so. And that brings me to my next point. Uh, Mr. Dr. Sarm, uh, Mr. Miss Slade and Dr. Slade, and she informed his teachers to stop accepting his work, to make it impossible for him to submit his work, as well as to, uh, void of any assistance from his teachers, whether it be a, a parent-teacher conference call or a student conference call of that nature. And yet I spoke to these teachers and they were the ones who told me that that's what they were instructed to do. Uh, confused how this is relative to the nature of the punishment that was originally given to him. I do not understand how this is ethical. And honestly, I do not understand how to profit him of this education is even legal. I brought that up to Dr. Slade as well and she has yet to address that question. And so therefore I'm just been wondering why such harsh decisions? When we spoke to, uh, Mr. Albert at level two, he also had every opportunity to take into consideration these, these things that we've mentioned, um, to make a decision as a leader himself and make a fair decision in which he opted to stick with, uh, Dr. Slade and Mr. Colker in that decision. Uh, for me, that was extending the time that he would have been out of school. Now we're looking at ninety-plus days that he would have been out. Again, the original punishment was for him to be out of school for thirty days. So at this point, is it about really the best, being with education for our son? The well-being of, of, of him as a student? Or is it really just about a power play at this point? I'm, I'm confused and I don't understand why this extends a harsh punishment.
So, um, with all that our wife stated, the professionalism and how the school has handled this entire situation hasn't been the best because, um, we've asked several questions. One particularly, how would him being at the alternative learning center affect him? Away from school, from his work, his current day-to-day work, and how will he transition back to that? Psychological aspect of that as well, I addressed that in the first hearing. And she has yet to respond to what that sentence will be like. Just a simple question, how would that be from a day-to-day perspective? I know it's listed in the handbook. You have to take a kid there on a daily basis and that's all this takes. We don't know what the surroundings will be like. And furthermore, looking at the place itself looks like prison. That's just what it looks like looking in from my perspective. In addition to that, we've sent several other emails, which there has been no response. We've sent emails to the school board. Me myself, being in corporate America, I understand what it takes to be a client and for you to respond to that person. Whether a simple acknowledgement of an email would have been okay. Something simple as like, we cannot respond or answer your questions at this time would have been sufficient. Not responding is a lack of professionalism, in my opinion. And the line of work that I do, if we don't respond to our clients within a certain timeframe, that is not acceptable. So I think common courtesy would have been to the simple, a response would be okay. And that's one of the things I like, okay, is it not just, uh, just totally avoidance is not a way of resolving an issue. My next thing is the way the initial vice principal handled the situation shows us that these teachers are not prepared or trained in a manner and how to respond to certain situations. Because initially, when he spoke to my wife, he told her he has to take him to the police station. The cops are going to come get you. So with the lack of knowledge and for us as well, the lack of knowledge thereof, we did not know what to do. We asked for explanation of how this process works. And all we said was we have to withdraw from school, that's all he told us. My life work, again, I like details. I asked for specifics. There was no specifics given to us in the matter of how this process would play out. We can't be referred to the handbook. The handbook is over hundreds of pages. Give us a, okay, look at page one sixteen in the handbook, this is what it states. That wasn't given to us. There was no clarity in the punishment as far as how this process would work. And for me, if someone goes into something for the first time, you at least give them some sense of, okay, this is what it would be like. All that was given to us was letter one and letter two appeal and that was it, nothing else. So the lack thereof shows, again, there's no training when it comes to that. And then they're not aware of the rules and regulations, even though you refer me to a handbook, that you have more knowledge of what's in there, here's the whole pages, that's it. With that being said, again, this is just something that With that being said, again, this is just something that we, again, lack of communication and explanation is a big part for us. If that was done in the onset of this whole situation, we might not be here. But because that wasn't communicated, there wasn't clear explanation, this is where we're
This is Fallon Loigain, and just kind of get ready to hand off final vote. Mr. Miss, this is more so directed towards you. During your interview with Hank, during your campaign to be re-elected, you were asked about your experience, you know, on the school board, and you had made the comment at the beginning of your time served, you were surprised that you didn't have much engagement or involvement with parents. You were shocked, and you finally did get approached by a parent, and so you welcomed the engagement and you encouraged it. And then you were asked by Mr. Hank, are there programs or associations that parents can get involved in to just assist, you know, volunteer, to be more involved? And you mentioned that there were guaranteed associations at the elementary level, and there were booster flows at high school level. Somehow, middle school was just left out. And I don't know if that was intentional or if it just non-existent, it might not be different. But I would desire to be a part of that solution and be more involved. And I wish it were on fair terms for me to do so. However, going through this process as a parent, it is concerning. This is how parents are not heard or this is how we're dealt with when we show concern for our child, it is concerning for us. And if you welcome more encouragement and engagement with parents, I would appreciate just that extra eye and attention to how things are being done and the process of all levels of how things are being handled. In closing, we have some new people that have been hired at Kiefer Crossing Middle School specifically. Dr. Slade is new, and so is Coach Coker, our principal, Coach. And they have shown that this is a little bit out of their way. I just ask, as my husband mentioned, that they're taking consideration of training the staff to show concern for our students. Middle school's a major turning point. They are not perfect. They are humans. They will make mistakes. And can we get back to the old days where we have the conversation with parents, if there is a concern, and we have those meetings, or even a write-up, which is completely sending the child on the first offense to T L C is not ideal? But I thank you for your time here, and it's out, and I appreciate it.
Mr. Cowherd, you may now proceed with your presentation. Again, please identify yourself for the record before speaking.
So, my name is Cowherd, Superintendent Schools of Kanyi I S D. The district has filed a record that we have submitted to you guys regarding the students.
Mr. Miss, do you, you may proceed with any rebuttal or closing remarks. Again, please identify yourself for the record before speaking.
Kevin Loigain. So, you said you saw Hank, or did you go to the--
Yes, the paperwork that they referred to--
Do we're supposed to come to those? I'm just wondering. We're not--
You can get it populated, but it's the record that you would have presented all the way through the levels, level 1, level 2, and then your level 3 appeal. That's all it is.
Okay, just--
It's the things that you've already seen or you've already produced. That's what the board actually comes to it, is those names, your grievance documents you would have preferred to respond to, that's level 1, level 2, and then your level 3 appeal.
Okay, just a question. So just in closing for me personally, I've been to read some research on this whole appeal process. And while we understand that majority of the time, the appeals typically stick with the administration, I'm asking from parents' perspective that you guys consider all that we said today. And knowing that we are here for our son, and we want the best for him, and the bottom line for us, we want to have an education. Not going to assist that we're being punished or just simply just, there's no sense of a second chance for certain things when it comes to being heard or understood. And we're fighting for the right for him because that's what we are here for.
My name is Fallon Loigain. This is not permitted, forgive me. You can scratch it from the record. This is just more occurrences that have taken place since we've initiated this appeals process. The school did report us to the state for eternity despite documentation that we had submitted to support him being at home at the toll that it was taking on him mentally and emotionally, and he was still completing his work. But we did go to court for them, the case was dismissed because, again, the school, their methods were contradictory to their own policy. So I just want to add that, and just showing you that we are here to support, to do what is fair and what is just. But I hope for a staff that is willing and intentionally wanted to do the same.
Mr. Cowherd, do you have a response? Does any member of the board have any clarifying questions for the board? Again, please identify yourself for the record before speaking.
I have a question for her. You gave him pepper spray for a bus protection at a bus stop, and he had it around his lanyard when he went to the restroom? And then--
Mr. Loigain, do you have--
I'm sorry. My other question besides for her would be for the administration. Is there a report in here that talks about the young other student who sprayed the pepper spray, or does it just refer that it's her son?
In your paperwork, it would just be a lot of stuff that's been dealing with-- the paperwork that they have submitted is dealing with their son, and we don't discuss whether it's this one with other parents. So that would be a separate this one record, but it would not be--
But there's no report that documents or claims that it is not a kid that does--
Your study is student statement number 3 actually.
So if one of them read number 2--
There are students, they said, we got from one person, it's hard to investigate the process, so it's not included in the paperwork, I guess.
Like, granted, the chosen is redacted, it says this other student corrected the spray that you're unrolling. And to be careful, you might take the other student account and say that it was the other student. So it would be inappropriate to ask if the other student--
And it's-- The punishment that Andre is receiving is for bringing the pepper spray to school.
In that initial discipline write-up, it was for possession and being gone off the restroom. The punishment that you received is consistent with similar incidents to that of the past with other students.
May I ask if the student conduct of policy at play here refers to pepper spray as a weapon, or how do we, I guess, what the rule is that specifically triggered the disciplinary action or this--
Hold on.
Foul. Foul. Have three scenarios that perhaps mitigate these circumstances where that comes?
The first rate is considered a prohibited item.
But in many cases, Mr. Cowherd, though, with a student of his excellent stature, simply would have went in for 15 days. There would have been a review, and then he simply would have been put back onto the program, and it would have been passed this, and he would be back in the normal day-to-day, understanding that he's still in the state, but yet, he's just having to deal with the consequences of the mistake, and then would have been put right back in. 15 days later, he would have been evaluated possibly, could have been put right back in.
Yes, the level 1 decision that Dr. Slade made was to uphold an initial 30-day placement, however, provide a 15-day review for the student, and that 15-day review would be committed on him showing up at T L C for 15 days, including his work while he was there. So the 30-day placement, if you were to check those two boxes, would have gotten reduced to 15 days.
That's what it said a little bit earlier.
I want to head back to the record, I guess, to the better question, like going to T L C.
When we own this one area record, yes, we don't allow that to go from monitoring level to the next, like his-- his age or he could not be able to, I can see that.
So the end of the year?
Correct. We can see that from administrator's level, we can see the whole disciplinary history there. We make a point, we give it to fresh start, and then transition to campus, upgrade that year's teachers, and on that, we're sure--
So there's no permanent transfer that goes on, basically?
I mean, is it a system? Yes. There's a double record there, but I'm not sure, because I'm trying to read that score. I'll learn some places, but I'm not sure that's--
This is Mrs. Carroll again. You mentioned that they stopped accepting his work because they were told to. Did you withdraw him? Because if you withdrew him, I could understand them stopping accepting his work. You did not withdraw him at that point?
This is Fallon Loigain. No, I had not withdrawn him at that point. So he was still registered at school, and as I mentioned, he was still completing his work, excuse me, turning in, until we started seeing that his grades weren't being updated. And we kept reaching out to him, hey, turn this into this assignment, what's going on here? Get his runaround, and finally, two teachers stated, oh, we were instructed to stop accepting his work. Can I probably be in conference calling, need other assistance?
Mr. Cowherd, if we, as a school district, if we just move him from Kiefer so he can be placed in the learning center, was he did with, no, actually, was he enrolled from Kiefer so he can be re-enrolled into the learning center for those 15 days?
No, the parents never enrolled in that learning center.
Right, but we--
He was still at Kiefer, and while he remained at Kiefer Crossing, not enrolled in the learning center, he had the initial 3-day suspension before his time was supposed to start at the learning center, thus practice, thus on practice, the 3-day suspension, and started T L C. After that 3-day suspension, and very often over, honestly, he still wasn't really withdrawn. Those are considered, like, used access. We are a district that does not provide remote construction, and the type of work and the manner in which it would have been delivered during that time would be considered remote construction in our case. He did have the opportunity to go to that work at T L C, and yet, this is a practice
This is Fallon Loigain. Again, as my husband mentioned, those were items or procedures that were not communicated to us, so we were operating on our own understanding. Neither Mr. Coker nor Dr. Slade explained that to us, and this goes back to, we've never been here before, because our child doesn't cause trouble, issues, so we don't know how this works. And so, yes, he was still completing his work and had been for some time, until whatever light went off and Dr. Slade instructed the teachers to stop accepting his work. To me, I think it would have just been coming courtesy to at least inform us as the parents that this was the plan, this is the procedure, instead of us asking, why aren't you updating his work? And if I might add, referring to his education as being remote, but honestly, we do not physically use books and paper anymore in the classroom. Everything is done on the laptop, which is why he still had access to complete his work online and turn in, because that's what he does anyway. Everything is sent in through the portal with Skyward or Canva, some nature of that. And so it does have a remote option and access. We withdrew him on November 3rd, after we saw that extensive retaliation effort by the school to report us to the state. And even in that letter, which was on November 2nd, it was a warning letter. If he continued to go to school, no further action would take place. But on that same day, they received the warning letter, they actually did report us to the state, and he was withdrawn on the 3rd. So the efforts to report us for eternity really don't make sense, and that's why the case was dismissed.
Everyone, Mrs. Eric, if I may, just remember, the issue before you is what's contained in the document. So if we can, if we could restrain things to clarifying questions regarding what the actual grievance is, please. Now that the board has heard the grievance, the board will now deliberate about the grievance in private, obtain legal advice, and decide what action to take. No action will be taken in private. Throughout the decision-making process, the board shall consider only the information contained in the record of the previous levels and the information presented during this consolidated grievance process. Just now, we're going to go into closed session and discuss. This is Mr. Trout. The closed meeting deliberation has concluded, and the meeting is now reconvening in open session. The time is 10:09 PM. The Kanyi I S D Board of Trustees is now reconvening in open session. No action has been taken in closed session. Concluding the grievance. Is there a motion regarding the disposition of the apparent grievance represented or presented during tonight's meeting?
Mr. President, I move to modify the disciplinary replacement of a student from 30 days at D A E P to 3 days at D A E P.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Motion to make the second to modify the placement at D A E P for 3 days. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. All opposed to the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. The votes are seven for the motion. And the motion has passed. Current grievance appeal is modified. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.
Just maybe he starts tomorrow, he can be back at Kiefer, because there's only 3 days left in the school week, he can start back at Kiefer. It's time range.
You don't know--
I can't--
It's a little late.
So there you go.
Out 14 on the agenda is re-over eyes and receipt of the board. I will preside over the meeting as we elect a board president. Are there any nominations for board president?
I will be chair of the seat.
All in favor for Craig to be elected president? Craig makes an investment, elected for president. Yeah, first time, kind of different, I think, for his time served last two years. I appreciate that. All right, we'll continue to honor the nominations for board vice president.
I will be visiting here.
All in favor?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Let's go. Farrell has been elected vice president for the other year. Are there nominations for board secretary?
I'm electing Wendy Sharp.
All in favor of Wendy Sharp to be elected secretary? All right. Wendy Sharp has been elected secretary for the other year. Are there nominations for the board assistant secretary?
I nominate Anselm Thomas.
All in favor?
I think they take my second.
Second, sorry.
I'm ready. Ready.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Assistant secretary.
It's 10:30 tonight.
All right. And has been elected assistant secretary for the other year. For being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Time is 10:13.